Okay, started to recording. Okay, so uh so are we clear about the cross multiplication by this method?
Yes, yes sir.
This will be very, very effective. If you practice a little bit, you will get it, you know, very, very fast.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay. Next, we move to power of numbers. Okay? Now, power of numbers means. Power of numbers means, the simplest power is to the power two, right? So let's see what behavior we have if we consider powers of two. So one to the power two is one. Two to the power two is four.
Four.
To the power two is nine. Four to the power two is?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Five to the power two is?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Six to the power two is?
Thirty-six.
Seven to the power two is?
Forty-nine.
Eight to the power two is?
Sixty-four.
Nine to the power two is?
Fifty-one.
Okay, tell me what you noticed from these powers? Things to note. Number one. Do you notice anything in these numbers? Any pattern that you notice?
There is this. Then again.
Addition of odd numbers. Like one plus three is four and four plus five is nine, then nine plus seven is sixteen.
Nine plus.
There is a definitive pattern. Look at this number, last digit. One, four, nine, six.
Yes.
One, four, nine, six.
Divider is five.
Five.
Hmm.
Right?
Yes.
So. So what, what can I say about this? So if my last digit of a square is one. Then the last digit. Then the last digit of the original number. Is what?
One or nine.
One or.
One or nine, yes, right.
If my last digit is four of the square. The last digit of my original number is?
Two or eight.
Two or eight.
Or eight. If my last digit is nine. My original number is?
Three or seven.
Three or seven. If my last digit is six. Original number is?
Four or six, four or six.
Four or six. And of course, five means original number is five. And of course, we know if the last digit is zero, then the original number will end in a zero. Right? Right? Am I right?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Clear? Are you sure? I'm talking about zero.
If the last digit is two, has two zeros, then there must be one zero in the original number.
Yes. If the last digit of the square is zero. We cannot say anything about it. If the last two digits has to be zero, then only the last digit of the original number will be zero. Okay? Like fifty, last digit is zero, but square root of fifty is not ending with a zero. But hundred, two hundred, right? All these numbers will have the last digit of the original number as zero. Clear?
Yes.
Okay. Now, what else do you notice from this? What else do you understand from this pattern?
Hello?
Yeah, tell me.
Sir, I have a.
Huh?
Okay, I have a question.
Tell me.
Yeah, does the root of five hundred contain zero on the last? So there is also.
Correct. So this is, this is root five into ten, right? If I take the square root. Right? So all I'm saying is that if the last number is only zero, then we cannot say anything about it. And you are right, okay? So this is not exactly a, a whole number, okay? So zero has to be. Uh considered in a different way, okay? All perfect squares like hundred, four hundred, nine hundred. Or sixteen hundred, okay?
Cannot be defined under the traditional method.
Yes, so only if they are perfect squares, then they have to have two zeros.
Yes.
That's, that's the point, okay? Okay, what else do you notice from this? Anything else do you notice? Okay, let me give you a hint. What are the missing numbers here? What numbers are missing here?
Two, three. Two, three, and eight. Five, five.
Seven, eight.
Seven, eight. Two, three, seven, eight.
What does this mean?
Yes.
That any number ending from these digits is not a perfect square.
Absolutely right. Any number that ends in two, three, seven, eight is not a perfect square. Not a perfect square. Right? These are things you have to apply when, when we get into the problems, okay? Any number ending in. Any of these, two, three, seven, eight is not a perfect square. That is number one. Number two, what do you, what pattern do you notice here? Look at the pairs, one, nine. Two, eight. Three, seven.
And there are both ten.
All this add up to ten.
Make ten.
Right?
Yes.
All this add up to ten. Correct? Now, how do we remember this? Without doing all this, how, what is the simplest way to remember this? The simplest way is now we know that the pair of numbers will add up to ten, right? So what are the pairs? One, nine, two, eight, three, seven, four, six, and five, five, five and five is same, so you don't have to bother. So automatically, you get the pattern, you get the. Um. You get the, um.
Are the number.
Yes, the couplets, right? One, nine, two, eight, three, seven, four, six, right?
Yes.
And remember this pattern, one, four, nine, six.
Okay.
That's it. I'll repeat again. So start off with one, two, three, four, five. Okay, so ten minus one is nine, this is eight, this is seven, this is six, and this will be five. And I know the pattern is one, four, nine, six, fourteen ninety-six. So that means if my last digit of the squares are any of these, then this will be the corresponding possible values of the original number. Last digit of the original number. Make sense?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Clear of this? Any doubts?
No. No, sir.
Okay. This is again a very, very important thing to understand and apply. There will be numerous places where you'll have to apply this concept. Okay, now let us look at a few examples. Okay. To me, what would be, okay, um. Okay, let me do one thing more, then I'll get, get into the problems. So we have done the squares, right? So these are.
Yes.
Power of two. So if I do power of three, what would be the last digits? One is one, two would be?
Eight, eight.
Three would be?
Nine, twenty-seven.
Seven, I'm considering only the la- last digit, okay?
Okay.
Four would be?
Six.
Four.
Four, sorry.
Four cube.
Sixty-four.
Four.
Four.
Five would be?
Five.
Five.
Six would be?
Six.
Six.
Seven would be?
Three.
Three.
Eight would be?
Two.
Two. Two.
And nine would be?
Nine.
Nine.
What do you notice here?
All the numbers are present.
Hmm?
All the numbers present, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, one, two, nine.
No, no, what is the pattern that you notice?
Pattern, no.
See, these patterns are what matters, right? Because when you get into applications, you will not time, get time to do all this. You will have to remember the patterns, that is most, most important.
For the first three numbers, for the first three numbers, it is adding up to ten. Eight, sorry, eight and two, ten, seven and three.
Nine and one is ten.
Eight and two is ten, okay, eight.
Eight and two is ten. Right?
Hmm.
Seven and three is ten. Four and six is ten, and also five will be left. So if my last digit of a cube. Is one, then what is the last digit of the original number?
One.
If the last digit of the cube is one, what is the last digit of the original number?
One.
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 If the last digit is two, what is the last digit of the original number?
Eight. Eight.
Last digit is three. Original number.
Seven.
Seven.
Last digit is four, original number.
Four. Four.
Last digit is five, original number is five. Last digit is six, original number is six. Last digit is seven, original number is?
Three.
Last digit is eight, original number is?
Two.
And last digit is nine, original number is?
Uh, nine. And nine, nine.
Okay. So what do you notice here?
The endings of this.
One gives one.
Yes, two gives.
Four gives four.
And nine gives nine.
Give five, six, give six.
Oh. Five, six.
Nine gives nine. Right? So what are we left with? Two, three, seven, eight, remember, these are the four numbers which, uh, do not end in a square.
Yes.
Remember?
Yes, sir.
Two, three, seven, eight cannot be the last digit of any perfect square, correct?
Correct.
And in cube, they form patterns, they form couplets. Two gives eight.
Yeah.
And eight gives two. Three gives seven, and seven gives three. See the pattern?
Yes, sir.
Understood? Understood?
Yes.
Okay, so therefore, in case of cube, if I summarize, then I can say that. All numbers except two, three, seven and eight, they end up in their own number. Zero, zero to zero, one to one, four to four, five to five, six to six, nine to nine. And this would be couplets with total of ten. So two to eight, three to seven, seven to three, eight to two. Two, three, seven, eight, two, three, seven, eight.
Two, three, seven.
Make sense?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Tell me, any, any confusion, any difficulty you are facing on this? Because this is the fundamental, this is the basic that, uh, you need to understand and not memorize, but understand the logic. So you have to basically remember two things. So one is one, four, nine, six, if you remember this, you'll remember all squares. And two, three, seven, eight, if you remember this, you'll remember all cubes. And two, three, seven, eight also you can remember because that will not give a square.
Perfect square.
Clear?
Yes, yes, yes.
Aklesha, clear?
Yes, sir.
Babisha?
Yes, sir, clear.
Understood? No problems? Till now?
No.
Okay.
No.
Next, we go to the fourth power. So let's see what happens here. So one is one, two would be what?
Six.
Power.
Three would be?
One.
One, one.
Four would be?
Six.
Six.
Five would be five.
Five.
Six would be six.
Will be six.
Seven would be?
One.
One.
Eight would be?
Six.
And nine would be?
One.
What happens here?
One, six, one, six, five, six, one, six, one.
What is the pattern here?
One, six, one, six.
One, six, one.
One, six, one, six.
Hmm.
One, six, one, six. One, six, one, six.
One.
And five.
Right? So the last digit of a cube cannot be what? What are the missing numbers?
Two, three, four.
Sorry, not cube, power four, not cube.
Power four, two, three, four, seven, eight.
Two, three, four, seven and eight.
Nine also.
Nine also.
Nine, sorry. Two, three, four, seven, eight, nine. So none of these can end up as a last digit of a fourth power. Clear?
Yes.
Yes.
See, there is another, there is another interesting pattern. So if you look at this chain, so one, one, and if you look at from the bottom, one, one, alternate. And if you look at six, the pattern is six, six, and then six, six, and then six, six. So two, four, six, eight will all end up in six, in the fourth power. Right?
Yes.
Right.
And one, three, seven and nine will end up in one. One, nine, seven, three. End up in one. Two, eight, four, six. End up in six. Interesting, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Getting it?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now. Let us go to a fifth power. What happens here? One remains one, two becomes?
Two.
Two, three becomes?
Three.
Four becomes?
Four.
Four.
Five is five, six is.
Six is six. Seven is seven.
Eight becomes?
Eight.
Eight.
Nine becomes?
Nine becomes nine.
So what does this tell you?
That the last digit remains the same in case of five power.
It remains the same, okay. What does that mean? Are you getting any pattern now? Basically, in, in power of numbers, you have to understand the patterns. Okay?
Okay.
That is the most important aspect of this. So we can understand that. In the fifth power, all the numbers will have the same last digit as the number itself. One to one, two to two, three to three, and so on, right?
Yes.
What happens to the sixth power? One is one, two becomes?
Four.
Three becomes?
Will give the same power as two.
Let's see, four becomes eight, five is five, six is six, seven is nine. Eight is four, and nine is one. Right? Yes. So now tell me what is the pattern that you are observing in terms of the powers?
One, four, nine, six, seven, six.
What is the pattern?
In all the hours.
One, five, two, six, three, seven.
The number is repeating itself after every second.
Five always gives five, six always gives six.
Yes, yes, yes.
Now, apart from that, what is happening?
In case of nine, it's always repeating nine, one, nine, one.
So if I look at two, it gives the pattern two, four, eight, six.
Six.
Right? Two, four, eight, six, and again, two, four, eight, six, right?
Right.
Yes.
Three gives the pattern, three, nine, seven, one. Three, nine, seven, one. Four gives the pattern?
Four, six, four, six. Four or six.
Four, six, four, six, four and six.
Six, four, four, four and six.
Four and six. Five and six is okay. Seven gives the pattern? Seven, nine, three, one.
Nine, three, one.
Right? Eight gives the pattern?
Yep, eight, four, two, six.
And nine gives the pattern?
Nine, eight.
What do you notice here? Look at two. The powers are two, uh, giving two, four, eight, six. Now look at this, two, eight, four, six, adds up to ten. Right?
Yes.
So how will you remember? Okay, so see, two gives two in the first place. So eight would be the third one. Therefore, four would be second, eight, six would be last. Three gives three as the first one, so seven would be the third one, because three plus seven is ten. Nine plus one is ten. So the next would be nine and last one would be one. Four will only give four and six, first is four and then six, and then it repeats like that. Seven gives a seven, so the third number would be three, and then nine and one. Eight gives first as eight, so the third would be two, four and six. And nine is one and nine. Here.
Yes, sir, yes.
Very, very interesting patterns, right? Any confusion on this? Any confusion?
No, sir.
Yes, no?
No, no.
Okay, so two, three, seven and eight. Remember, two, three, seven, eight? Cannot end.
Perfect square.
Perfect squares cannot have the last digits, so here also, two, three, seven, eight are the only four numbers which gives a repeating pattern of four. Right?
Yes.
Four and nine. Gives a repeating pattern of two.
Two numbers.
Right?
Right.
Ah, I, I wrote this wrong. This would be nine, one.
Should be nine, nine.
Power is nine.
Nine and one.
Second power is one. So two, three, seven, eight are the four numbers which repeats every fourth power. And four and six are the two numbers which repeats every second power. Rest of the numbers, zero, one, five, uh. These.
Six.
Uh, I've counted everything. Six, yeah, zero, one, five, six, they always end in the same number. In all powers. Clear?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'll take a pause here, just look at it and tell me if you have understood the pattern. Understood?
Yes, sir.
Is it clear?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. One last thing to note is two and eight. As well as four, they have even numbers, all even numbers. Obviously, even number to the power of even would be, uh, to the power of anything would be even. So two, four, eight, six, and eight, four, two, six, the numbers are the same, but the order is different. For three and seven, it is three, nine, seven, one, and seven, nine, three, one. Right?
Yes.
Yes.
So. These two are again having the same pattern. Clear?
Clear.
Okay, now let us get into some interesting stuff. So tell me, what would be the last digit of? So tell me what would be the last digit of two to the power ninety-nine?
Two to the power ninety-nine, ninety. Okay.
Eight.
Is this correct?
Yes, sir.
How did you say eight, Aklesha?
Um, there's a trick, sir, that we, two has four repetitive number of digit.
Right.
At the end, so we divide ninety-nine by four and whatever the remainder is, we take that digit.
Absolutely correct. The others got it?
Yes, yes, sir.
So whatever is the power, right, you just divide that power by four and take the remainder. So in this case, ninety-nine by four is twenty-four is the quotient and three is the remainder.
Yes.
So whatever is the last digit of two to the power three will be the last digit of two to the power ninety-nine, which is eight. Clear?
Yes, sir.
Is it clear to everyone?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So what did I do? I just took the power and I divided it by four and I took the remainder. And whatever is the power, uh, whatever is the value of the last digit of that uh, number which is two raised to the power of the remainder which is three would be the same as the power number given. Clear?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now we are actually getting into cat level, okay? So tell me what would be the last digit of one thirty-three to the power one thirty-two?
Three.
Three. Anyone else with any other answer? Anyone else with any other answer? Okay. How do we do this? We ignore the other digits, we just look at the last digit and we look at the power. Now what is the pattern for three? Three to the power one is three, three to the power two is nine, three to the power three is seven, three to the power four is one. Right?
Yes.
Correct?
Right.
Three, nine, seven, one. Right? What is three to the power zero?
One.
One.
So I will go with the same logic. I divide one thirty-two by four, which gives me what?
Zero remainder. Zero as the remainder.
Thirty-three is the quotient and zero is the remainder. So I raise three to the power zero, which is my remainder. I get one. Right? Am I right?
Yes.
No, I'm not.
But it should be into three.
You're wrong. So whenever you have a zero, take the fourth power. That is a. Okay. Three to the power four is eighty-one. Right?
Okay, right, right, right.
Three to the power eight would be eighty-one into eighty-one, so one into one. Right? Three to the power twelve would be eighty-one into eighty-one into eighty-one, one into one into one. Clear?
Yes, sir.
Whenever you get the remainder as zero, take the fourth power of the number. Is it clear?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Rahul Shobhi, clear?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So let us take another example. Let's say, um, thirty-seven to the power sixty-seven. Last digit.
Three.
Three.
Three should be.
Sorry, come again?
Three, three.
Everyone got this?
Yes. Yes.
So we divide sixty-seven by four, we get a remainder of three, so seven to the power three gives a last digit of three.
Last digit of three.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, tell me what would be the last digit of, uh, seventy-nine to the power one seventy-three plus eighty-two to the power sixty-nine? What would be the last digit of this?
One.
Sorry?
Two, one.
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 Yes.
Anyone else?
One, sir.
Everyone got one?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
Aklesha, Aklesha, you got one?
Yes. Yes.
Nine.
Okay.
He has nine.
Yeah, very simple. Divide one seventy-three by four, you get one as the remainder. So nine to the power one is nine and sixty-nine by four, you get three, uh, you get one as a remainder. So two to the power one is two, so one.
Nine, good.
So one seventy-three, we have to divide it by two, nine.
Yeah, nine is, yeah, nine is two, so you divide by two, so anyway you get the same remainder.
Yes.
Correct. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, let us take, uh, one more example. Uh, fifty-nine to the power one eighty-three minus thirty-seven to the power seven eighty-two.
Zero.
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 Zero, right?
Yes.
Everyone got this?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next one. Thirty three to the power one thirty-seven minus uh, twenty-two to the power hmm, sixty-three.
One minus three, two, two, two is? One minus three, one is eleven, so eight, eight, eight.
What is the answer? Eight or two?
Eight.
Eight.
What are the others saying? So this is three to the power one, right? One thirty-seven, if I divide by four, remainder is one. So remainder is one. One is three and this remainder would be three, so two to the power three is eight.
Five.
Right?
Oh, five, sorry.
Five, five.
Five, 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 yes.
Three minus eight is minus five.
Minus.
No, thirteen, thirteen minus eight, thirteen minus eight.
Yes. You can do thirteen minus eight or you do minus five and add ten.
From ten.
Yes, yes.
Here.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
It's one and the same thing. What you told is correct. So thirteen minus eight means I'm adding ten, correct? So it would be five. Okay?
Yes.
Is it clear?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Hmm?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now we will do one last thing and then we'll wrap up for the day. Tell me how many zeros? Okay, no, forget it. Tell me what is the highest power of five in factorial twenty? Highest power of five in factorial twenty?
Hmm, four.
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 Four. Correct. So we have five, ten, fifteen and twenty. These are the only four numbers in factorial twenty which has five. So I get one five here, one five here, one five here, one five here, right? What is the highest power of two in factorial twenty?
Eighteen.
Five. Ten.
Huh?
Eighteen, eighteen.
Eighteen, eighteen.
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 Yeah, yeah.
One, eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yeah.
How did you get eighteen?
It has a trick, uh, using box function. Twenty by two, two plus box of twenty by two plus box of twenty by two square plus and so on.
Right?
Yes.
This is what we do, right?
Yes.
There is a simple way of doing this. So you divide twenty by two, you get ten. Divide it by two again, you get?
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Divide by two again.
Two, get two and then one.
Uh, you get one. So you add up these things, ten, five, two and one. Okay. This is easier to do than this, doing this. That's the only thing. When you, when you deal with bigger numbers, you just go on dividing it and just add the, except the first number, add the rest, that's it. Okay?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any doubts on whatever we covered today? Anything that, uh, should understand or you have some difficulty? Is this making sense? Is this helping?
Yes, it is helping and, uh, we have to do some homework.
Yes, yes, obviously. I will, I, I will start assigning, uh, tasks from today, right? So I will send you the link, uh, Rahul and Shobhi, you are acquainted with the quiz stuff. So, uh, just help them out. So there's nothing, uh, Aklesha, I'll just send you a link, you just click on that link, okay? You will, uh,
Okay.
I'll send you the user ID and password, so you just input that. When you enter that site, you'll see a question paper in front of you. Just take that paper, that's it.
Okay.
Okay, it's an online portal where, uh, we do online exams and I prefer that because, uh, it gives you a flavor of the actual cat paper or actual, you know, management, uh, exam papers.
Yes.
They're all online. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, sir.
So that's it for today. So we wind up here and I'm going to send you the recording and, uh, I'll send you the, uh, exercise, uh, by today.
Next class.
You'll be, you'll be sending that on WhatsApp?
No, 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 I'm going to send, uh, uh, send it on, uh, hmm, okay, I can send it on WhatsApp. Uh, I'll send it both on WhatsApp as well as Skype, so that, uh, you can check it in either place.
Next class.
Next class would be tomorrow?
Tomorrow, okay.
Okay, uh, Bhavisha, uh, just tell me your timing. Is it, is this timing fine for tomorrow?
Yes, sir, it's fine for this week, it's fine. I'll have to check, yes, I'll have to check for the next week.
Yeah, just check for the next week and let me know at least one day in advance so that, uh, you know, I can tell the rest of the people. I'm fine with any, anytime, uh, but, uh, we'll just have to coordinate with the others.
Okay, sure, I will. Okay.
Okay, guys, uh, thanks a lot, uh, have a nice evening and stay safe. We meet again tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, sir, thank you. Good night.
Bye.
Thank you, sir, good night.